Out to Planning Commission tonight. We'll open at 6:00. Roll call, please.
Chairman Cox.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ferris.
Here.
Commissioner Hayman.
Here.
Commissioner Mondragon.
Here.
Commissioner Richter.
Thank you.
Five present, we have a court.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Commissioner Ferris, would you lead us, please?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
I'll second.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman.
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon.
Aye.
Commissioner Richter. Five ayes, motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of 3:28:23?
All move.
I'll second.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman.
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon.
Aye.
Commissioner Richter. Five ayes, motion carries.
We move into the public comment portion of our meeting. Persons wishing to address the commission on matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time pursuant to Brown Act. The Planning Commission may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section is a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Is there anybody that wishes to address the commission? Seeing none at this time. Pardon me. Do we have a caller?
Seeing none at this time.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir. Okay. Any other comments from the public? Things not on the agenda? If not, at this time, I'd like to turn a moment over to our staff. Okay. All right. All right. Let's move on. This is a continuation of a public hearing, which we will start a continuation now. This item is a plan review, the SPR 21-06, a general plan amendment, GPA 22-01, and a zoning change 22-01. Request for a zone change and general plan amendment to the residential high-density, middle, medium-density multifamily to accommodate the development of SPR 21-06, a phased development of 361 multifamily units, and a clubhouse APN 47901015. Staff.
Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to present our planning consultant, Ahsoka, and he is going to present the staff report on this item tonight.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and as Heather said, my name is Ahsoka Herod, and I'm a planning consultant.
Bring the mic a little closer to you, just in case, because I'm having a hard time, and I want to make sure those that are on the line can hear you.
Sorry about that. I've been working as a consultant for several years, and I see a couple of new faces, and welcome, and thank you. Item before you tonight. Before I begin that, I have to apologize for one typo on the staff report. It's on the first page, and under this heading, subject. The site plan review is shown as 22-06. It should be 21-06. And all the other information and numbers on the staff report is correct.
Where it says site plan review?
Site plan review. Instead of 22-06, it should be 21.
Okay, mine shows 21-06.
Okay, so we may have corrected in some pages. It's only on the subject column, and everywhere else, it's shown as 21-06.
Yeah, it's first page.
Okay. With that, item before you tonight is a request for a general plan amendment, a zone change, and a site plan review. The project is located on the south side of Raider Avenue, extending from down street to the east, and from Raider Avenue on the east side, the property extends all the way to the Bowman Road, including the Bowman Wash area. This is a picture of the site taken from Raider to the left and down-street on the middle, and it's, as you can see, it's a totally vacant property at this time. This is the SSU parcel number, and it shows the property has 20.13 acres, and that's the net area of the property, and the gross area of the property is 21.34 acres. I'm sorry. The APN number for the parcel is 47901-15. I am going to go through each application separately, starting with the general plan amendment request. The existing general plan for the area is RM, as you can see this general plan map. And the request is from RM, which is residential medium-density, to RH, which is residential high-density. And also, as you can see, there's a big P on the property, and that indicates a park, possible park location. And keep in mind, this is a private property, and city, when the city went through the general plan, it located certain park locations based on distances to existing parks and recreational facilities and whatnot. But property was not under city control at any given time. It was a desire by the general plan to have a park over there if all the other conditions are met, including funds to acquire the property and funds to improve the property as a park and all of that. If you recall, some time ago, the circle that's seen to my left is a designation called Village Commercial Center, and that property had a, one half of the property in commercial and the other half of the property in RM, residential medium-density. And in 2018, I think September of 2018, the Planning Commission and the City Council approved a general plan amendment and a zone change, along with a development, site plan approval, to develop the property as an apartment complex. So cities, since that time, city has not updated the general plan, so that's why it is still shown as residential to the north and commercial to the south with a circle on it. But the circle has been removed from the general plan, and the area has been designated as RH, residential high-density. The request to the right, toward the current proposal, then will be to the same general In order to comply with the new general plan designation, if approved, the applicant is also asking the existing R2 zoning, R2 meaning low-density multifamily residential, to change the zoning to R3, medium-density multifamily. And in a minute, you will see why they are asking a higher density for the project area, and it's not only complying with the general plan, but also it's going to accommodate a residential project that meets the density under the general plan and the zoning. This is the existing zoning map. Once again, the area southwest of the project site has been changed already to R3, and this map is in the process of updating. So when the next time the city updates the zoning map, it will show that area to the southwest of the project area as R3. The applicant is also asking approval of a site plan review, which is site plan review 21-06, for the entire, to develop the entire area of 21.34 acres, which is the gross area, in three phases. Phase one of the project is located along the south side of Raider Avenue, and it will consist 9.7 acres, and applicant is proposing to develop that 9.7 acres with 113 units, and manages quarters on top of a clubhouse and a children's play area within the phase one. The access to the project area is on Raider Avenue. There's two access points shown on Raider Avenue. However, city, in our correspondence, previous correspondence, and we raised a question in an emergency, there should be another access point, and that's what they are showing on the phase one map, to the right, my right, a 25-foot-wide temporary access going all the way to the south of the property. And it goes along the property line, it doesn't go anywhere else. So therefore, there is a condition requiring them to connect that access road to a paved street to the right or to the left, so it has to be connected with the phase one, so phase one will have an emergency exit or access. Within this phase, 267 parking spaces are required. The applicant is proposing to construct 339 parking spaces, and some of the parking spaces, I think, I believe, either five or six parking spaces are what we call it EVCS, electrical vehicle charging stations. In other words, those parking spaces will have the facility for electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging. Phase two is immediately south of the phase one, and that area consists of 6.59 acres, and the applicant is proposing to develop 140 units within the phase two with 305 parking spaces. However, 324 parking spaces are required, so the additional parking spaces are coming from the additional parking that was provided within the phase one, so there's no shortage of any parking within the, once the parking, facing two is completed. The additional access point to the south still continue through this area, and that access will be connected to a paved street. There's some additional information I'm going to provide later, how they are proposing to get a third access point to the project area. Phase three is going to complete the project, and phase three includes 5.68 acres, and 101, I'm sorry, 108 additional units will be constructed during this phase, along with 246 parking spaces, and only 244 parking required for that 108 units that they are proposing. So there will be some additional parking altogether when the project is completed. And phase two and phase three will also include electric vehicle charging stations. City was in negotiations with the applicant for an access point rather than a temporary access to the south, so that the whole area can benefit from an additional access point. So this slide shows you what the applicant is proposing. Applicant is proposing a roadway connection to the south, to the Bowman Road over the Wash. They will be building a bridge and connecting the project area to Bowman Road, and they will be improving the north side of Bowman Road with the right-of-way. And this will provide an access, a permanent access point to the project area that will contribute to lessen any traffic impacts, not totally, but to some extent, any traffic impacts on Raider Avenue to the north. Building elevations are typical building elevations with tile roofs and stucco exterior, and this is the left side of the, if you face the clubhouse, this is the left-side elevation of the clubhouse. And the apartment buildings are two-story, and they will have rodine railings on staircases as well as on the balconies. Again, the structures are stucco with a tile roof. In order to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, city performed an initial study, which resulted in preparing a mitigated negative declaration. The applicant has prepared a BIOTA study for the project area, and the BIOTA recommended at certain times of the year, if they are going to disturb the land, there will be certain mitigation measures required, and those are added to the initial study, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared. And since the project is adjacent to the Bowman Wash, in the past, the La Hantone Water Quality Control District indicated that they have jurisdiction over the Bowman Wash. Therefore, projects adjacent to the Bowman Wash, we processed those initial studies through the state clearinghouse, and we processed this initial study through the clearinghouse for 30 days. And as a result, we received three comments, one from the fire department, and two from concerned citizens. And prior to this meeting, we have provided responses to all three letters, and they are in your package, the letters we received, as well as the responses. With that, we are recommending approval of the general plan amendment 22-01 and zone We are recommending you to recommend to the city council approval of those two items. And subject to city council approval of the general plan amendment and the zone change, we are recommending that you approve the site plan review 21-06, subject to all the conditions of approval that's included in your staff report. And we also recommend that you recommend to the city council adoption of a mitigated negative declaration for the zone change and the general plan amendment, and you adopt the same for the site plan review, if you approve the site plan. We are providing you with some options. As recommended, you can approve the project, as recommended by the staff, with, if you feel that you can make minor adjustments. But if you want lot more additional information, you have an option to continue the item and direct staff to bring back any additional information you may need. Also, you can deny the project, but since you have only resolutions approving the project, and you will have to provide staff with reasons for your denial, and allow us to come back with denial resolutions. That concludes staff presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Any additional staff comments? Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, let me turn the time over to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to address the commission on this matter?
Yeah, my name's Mark.
No, come right up here to the podium, please. That way, they can hear you in TV land. Thank you. Right over there at the podium?
Oh, podium, okay.
And then give us your name again.
Yes, sir. My name's Mark Rhodes, and I got a couple of questions. First of all, is this subsidized by the state, this project?
No, it's not.
It's not? Okay. And the area surrounding that, they're all, you know, regular houses.
Right.
And I think that building a project like this in that type of area is going to create a lot of congestion. The street's going to have to be widened, obviously, to get in and out. Right now, as it is, it's hard to get in and out of there. Everybody's going to Walmart and what have you. But I don't know where this gentleman lives, but I recommend that we go with the original zoning. It's there for a reason. It's to protect homeowners like myself and people here living in those neighborhoods that have to contend with that. That's all I got.
May I add, both for you and the public, in the packet, one of the things that you'll find, and I'm sure that at least one or more of the commissioners will address it, is that Raider is going to have to be paved. It's going to be widened and paved. Also, the access across the Bowman Channel via bridge, which also gives access to the housing, not just the apartments, and allows free flow all the way over to Bowman. And so there's additional traffic mitigation that has been considered in this project that the developer is being required to put in at his expense. Also, know that this is not a Section 8 housing. This is private development that is the prevailing rate for rental units. One of the concerns that we have is that the base is asking for a certain amount of housing, and under the current rules of building codes, and the cost and the interest rates to build a new home, if many of you know, will be $300,000 or $400,000. And these starting engineers cannot afford $300,000 or $400,000, because that's $2500 to $3500 a month when they come in. So part of that is allowing the ability to have a transition, where these are two- and three-bedroom homes or apartments for that transition, so that we have the churn off the base and still be able to meet the base's needs as well. So that's the reason a lot of this is being considered. So that way, if you're concerned about certain things, that's just additional information for you. Do we have anybody else from the public?
Paul Walters. I live over at 605 Glen Court. I guess, in the past, developers are primarily, and I get it for themselves, I just want, I want the council to look at it hard to ensure, and I don't think we should rezone it. There's no reason to rezone it, in my opinion. I've lived there 30 years. I understand about the increase in flux of the young engineers coming here, but I would hope that we stick with the original zoning. It was there for a reason, or do a larger study, or have an understanding of the influx of new personnel coming in, and what will be coming in. These young ESDPs, I don't think are going to be needing two- and three-bedroom apartments. Additionally, the new ones that were just built, I don't know if those, what capacity those are. Those are 600 units, I believe.
Are you talking about the ones on Norma?
Yes.
72 units.
There's only 70?
And that's affordable.
That's, oh, that is affordable?
Yes.
Yeah, that is partially subsidized by the state.
Okay, okay. Again, I haven't looked at the package, this is the first time I looked at it now, but I just, developers typically, I get it, but they're not from the city. They don't have the city's best intention at heart. They don't have the residents' intentions at heart. I know you guys do. I just want you to look at it hard and long and think about it. I'm opposed to rezoning it. I just, again, it was set for a reason. When it was developed back then, we put the zonings in for a purpose, and what's changed it to mitigate that, besides a developer coming in here, and he wants more bang for his buck? And we want additional housing for the engineers. I get that. Thank you.
Thank you. So one other piece of information that we'll provide here for the community is that if there is no zone change, the difference is 59 units. So when you see 360 units, the difference is 59 units.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're not talking about reducing it from 360 to 150. Okay? It's very minimal, but you also have to understand that there, anyway, that's a developer thing, but, you know, you have to make it work, too. And so, yes, we need to look at everything to make sure that it's good for the city, and as well as being able to accommodate as well for the developer. And I understand that he doesn't live here in the community, but... And I understand that he doesn't live here in the community, but we have to look at the city, and if it's good for the city, then that's where we'd recommend it. If not, and that's why we ask your input, you know, what are your objections or what are your concerns? And then that way, we have that opportunity to address them.
And I appreciate it. And finding out what's in Section 8 or subsidized by the state, that helped a lot.
Yeah, after the first question, I felt like you needed a little more information.
Can I jump into you?
Yes.
So, part of the reason why we, as a staff, are recommending the rezoning is because there was an engineering constraint that we are using to justify the more units. So, with it being R3, the density would leave a big vacant open area where they would have to put a sump in, and with Bowman Wash being right there, you have a built-in sump. So, rather than having unimproved area with a giant sump that's going to collect a bunch of weeds, we felt that it would look better and be more aesthetically pleasing to the public to have them develop the Bowman Channel, put then, we have to classify it as a bridge, it's a land bridge, it's just going to have culverts under it because of the width. But to facilitate access on Bowman and to not have an eyesore within the middle or stuck up next to the Bowman Channel, when you have the Bowman Channel there, we felt it was a greater benefit to the public to improve the Bowman Channel, be able to facilitate the water from that area getting out of town rather than staying on site.
So, part of this improvement is developing that?
Yes.
Correct, correct. So, the city is doing a project, we are about 98% designed, we're going to go out to bid on this, I'm going to say probably in the next couple of months. We're going to widen Norma and put in a big arch culvert at Norma and complete the Bowman Channel design from China Lake Boulevard all the way to Norma. So, their project would facilitate up to the improvements that are already done at Downs all the way to where we stop on Norma. So.
The one worst thing I know about is that the other concern was pulling off of Raider onto Downs.
Come back up here, please. We can hear you, but they can't. Thank you.
And the other concern is pulling off of Raider onto Downs. I guess you've looked at that hard. That is one of the, that is a horrible intersection as it is now, because there is no four-way stop there. There is down at Bowman. But right there, there isn't. So, going on, there's a lot of traffic. So, are we going to put an additional stop sign there, or what are we going to do to mitigate that traffic going on and off? That's why I was just more preference to be more towards Downs and that at Downs as opposed to back in the, off by Glen Court and Heather and all those.
So, one of the big things, the original proposal did not have the access on Bowman. It had all your access going to Raider. And all of our intersections there are what we consider in engineering world as a level of service A, which means the wait times there are not much at all. And the trip generation, which is based off standard practice through the Caltrans manual and through the state of transportation, the increase in trips actually didn't even warrant any work to be done to that intersection with it all going that way. So, city staff felt that it was a lot better, you've got lots that exit onto Raider right there. We did not want to have a backup on Raider. So, we felt that we had to find a way to facilitate traffic to an arterial, to the Downs or to Bowman. But Downs, they're locked by how big their frontage is there, and I did not want an intersection that was coming out onto Downs within 200 feet of the intersection at Raider, because that's going to create, in my opinion, more problems there. So, that's why we asked for the construction of a land bridge to get out onto Bowman.
Okay. When you say land bridge, so vehicles can go over and everything else?
It'll be, it'll be a 40-foot-wide, full-developed asphalt road that'll come out. They're going to widen Bowman. The current proposal showed a raised median on Bowman, but we, I personally think that it should be a two-way left turn lane. So, it'll be set up to where you can pull out into a median, get up to speed, merge into traffic.
And that's with Phase 1?
That's, absolutely. So, if, in my conditions, I wrote flat out that any phase requires the construction of the exit onto Bowman.
Okay, so Phase 1 will have that regardless?
Correct.
If they've developed Phase 2 or whatever, that will be part of this?
Correct.
Yeah, engineering condition number six, if you get into it online, it says "design and construct full," and it'll describe that. But yeah, that'll be Phase 1.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a caller. Okay, you'll have to speak up, we can't hear you.
Hi, this is Donna Hawker. Good evening.
Hi, we can hear you.
Great. I just had a quick question. I did print out the packet, and I was skimming through it quickly, so if I missed it, I apologize in advance. Is there numbers for rental incomes for the two-bedroom and three-bedroom, like what the rents will be?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know that they've said it. We do have the developer online. Do you, would you like to answer that? Or the architect?
The apartment have a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom. Most is a two-bedroom, two-bath.
Okay. And what, do you have a proposal, what you're going to charge for rent?
I believe right now is around, I believe it's around $1,100, I think, two-bedroom.
Okay, and the three-bedroom?
According to market rate. Three-bedroom may be around $1,300.
Thank you. Donna, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cox, very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Thank you. Any other from those that are attending here? Yes, sir?
My name is Neil Stoner, 721 Tricia Court. We had a gentleman come in late. I don't know who you are, could you introduce yourself?
This is our city engineer, head of public works, Travis Reed.
Okay. Thank you. My comment is, a couple of comments. The high cost of building a single-family home is not because of inflation. It's because the builders, the building permits are way too high. Builders have to provide solar power. They have to provide fire sprinklers, and it's driven up the cost. I don't know the math behind it, but it's putting those small family homes, say, two- and three-bedrooms, just like these developers want to build, out of reach. So, when I was building, I built several homes in this area, there was very low fees. They actually waived the school fees for a period of probably two or three years, I'm guessing. And we had a small economic boom in this town with building. So, I would recommend looking at something like that and provide some single-family homes that are smaller in size than putting up a 300-plus-unit development right in the middle of more single-family homes. And my next question is, what happens if these young engineers don't want to live in an apartment? What do you do with the empty apartments? Do you say, "We need more Section 8," and rezone it for Section 8? That's my fear. Because I live at, in the old Dieter track, putting up a Section 8 housing development right across the street, I didn't even know about it, because, like a lot of people, wasn't paying attention. And that was a really, really bad decision. It's a really bad spot. There's other places you could put these developments, but right in the middle of a single-family, small homes is not the place. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Does that happen? Can you change it to Section 8 once it doesn't get built?
Well, it's, it's a different subject, but the ones on Norma are not Section 8.
No, I mean, I'm just talking about the ones that this developer tried to build.
No, that, that's, yeah, it's one, it's a completely different issue, but, you know, when you're doing hypotheticals, we could do that forever. And unless something actually happens that's actionable, that has to either come to us or the city council to make conjecture or theories or what-ifs, is not beneficial. So, it's more to the use of what we're doing here tonight is whether or not to approve the extension of the zoning to medium and high density or not, to approve the development, because anything other than that is really counterproductive. Did you have something that you'd like to share?
Yeah. Okay. This is like an influx of people. We have section 8 homes.
Come up here and talk to us.
I am.
But let's stick, let's stick to this development.
I'm going to try.
Not the ones on Norma.
No. I'm going to try. My name's Alice Ningle, and I live off of Raider. We're talking about an influx of, we've had a lot of new building. We've had some section 8 houses added, and now we have this apartment complex added. My family's lived in Ridgecrest a long time, and Ridgecrest has always had a high and a low, depending on, I don't know, whoever goes in and is in charge of bases. We've had rifts, we've had reductions and so forth. My question is, we have a guarantee all these people are coming in to rent these apartments. Do we have an influx of people coming in to rent these apartments, like the engineers you were saying?
Well, all we're saying is, what the base is providing us for information is just information we can provide, either to a developer or whatever. Whether the fruition of that actually happens, that's nothing that the city can control. The developer has to also look at his own risk in his development. That's not something that the city can control. What the city can control is zoning and improvements, which is what we're talking about here tonight. And so, guarantees, you'd probably want to address the base.
Well, no, I was just saying, so there's word that is going to influx.
Well, be mindful, be mindful that this is a phased unit.
Right. So, one, two, and three.
For example, if they build the first phase, we get our improvements, okay? And there isn't a need, it may not continue. It might.
I've seen that.
It's going to have to depend on that need, you know, to, you know, do they want the units? The gentleman asked, you know, maybe they don't want to live in an apartment.
Right.
I don't know.
Right. I understand.
But it's based on supply and demand.
Okay. So, you're saying the supply is coming in and we need it. It may change, is what you're saying.
Right. So, a development like this is never going to be developed overnight.
No, I realize that. Also, I think what the gentleman was trying to say is, if there is a problem, like, let's say they do want to go to Section 8, does that come up for a vote that the people, let's say, we don't get the people, reduction in force, whatever, and they want to change these from residential apartments to a Section 8, do we get to have a hearing on that before that happens? If that happens? I'm speculating. You're speculating on people coming in, I'm speculating if they don't come in.
Sure.
So, that's the only thing. So.
Well, and I can't give you an answer to that, but I'm saying if there is a change in any type of designation, especially in zoning, okay, that has to come back, that has to be approved by the city council.
And that is made public.
The planning commission can make a recommendation. Our job is to go through it, do the hard work, the heavy lifting, go through what we think has to be of benefit to the city, okay? And then make a recommendation to the city council. The city council is the only one that can actually change the zone.
Okay. Well, what I'm asking is that, is that when I went on to the website, I realized there was a meeting tonight, and I came. So, it was made public. I'm just asking if it is a change, is it made public again? Do we get to have another meeting and, like this, and voice our concerns or possibly alternatives?
Sure. Let me give Heather some, a minute here. She's our city planner.
Hi. So, we, although I appreciate Mr. Cox's comments on the base and possible economic conditions, I do want to clarify that the city and staff, what we're here to do is not to speculate on the economic conditions. The developer has a right to apply for whatever as property owners, just as you all have a right to come and participate. And I also have to interrupt and say, thank you all so much. So exciting to see so many people here. But anyways, so, the thing is, all we can do as staff is to present findings that it conforms with the zoning code and it conforms with the general plan. As we did mention, it is, and as you all are aware, it's a zone change, and it does up the zoning. But that's, what that is, is 60 units. It's not, it's not a significant increase in the project. And the improvements that we did condition for the project do benefit the surrounding area as well. But it's already zoned this. And as a city, the state mandates that we have meet certain housing goals. So, the state gives us our regional housing needs allocation numbers. And so, what we as the city and what staff has to do is to provide the opportunity for housing development, and that opportunity is through zoning. So, that's what the multifamily and the single-family zoning does. Other than that, we don't have the ability to say we don't like multifamily. That's all we can do, is condition the project to best suit the needs of the neighborhood and to provide everything we can for the project and to try to make it work with the numbers that were provided from the state. So, I do, I do really want to clarify that. I mean, I understand, you know, and I feel the same way, you know, are we growing, are we not? You know, but that's, that's not within our purview of what we can do. We really have to stick to what the zoning use is and does it conform with that? And in this case, because it is an amendment and we are upping the zoning, have we met the conditions to make sure that it still properly facilitates the type of development that we have in front of us? And so, that, as commissioners, is what we're asking you to consider, is if the conditions have been properly used and placed on this project in order to facilitate this development. And I mean, that's, that's what's within our purview. I mean, I agree, we can speculate about the economy, but who knows?
That's what we're all doing. Okay. Thank you.
So, and then I'd just like to jump in real quick. So, the last gentleman that commented about the permits and stuff, we 100% agree with you. It's not, our permits as a city are actually relatively cheap compared to anywhere else you go, but we have no control over what the code dictates. And the California Building Code is what dictates fire sprinklers. It's what dictates solar. It's what dictates providing battery backup now. It's all, that's all stuff that we can't control. So, we just have to live by the state guideline for that. And that, you're right, it makes a residential home very, very hard to build these days. So, would we love to see residential homes, apartment homes, anything that was more affordable? Absolutely. The state gives us these housing needs that says, "Hey, we need you to build all these things," but yet every code change they make makes it more expensive to build. So, we feel your concerns there.
Also, be mindful, we don't control what the school fees are. That's not controlled by us. And I also need to make a correction. This gentleman that walked in here is, his new title for a while now is Deputy City Manager. And so, yeah, he's actually carrying several hats. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Nick Grace. I live on Janelle Court. I just wanted to make a comment that the developer says that rent's going to be based off market value with around $1,100. Working with all the contractors that have came in from the earthquakes and all of that, the issue isn't finding places to live, it's the price of the rent. So, when, it doesn't matter if they rezone it to Section 8 or whatever, they're going to go off the market value. And when these influx of people don't show up, and they're going to go through with all three phases of these, of the development, they're going to lower the cost of the rent, and then they're going to lower it until they fill those units. So, it doesn't matter whether it's Section 8 or whatever, it's going to go off the market value. And as the market value falls, that's what's going to fill up those units, which is going to be completely, I mean, I get it, 50 units, it doesn't really matter, but I thought that should be said. It doesn't matter if it's Section 8 or not, they're going to go off the market value. And the influx of- value. And the influx of people, there, it's just not gonna, there's not gonna be 361 people that are gonna be paying $1,100 a month. It's gonna, we all know what this is gonna turn into. It's gonna ruin the neighborhoods around it, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up?
My name is Jack Ingle. I live on Janelle Court, too. I know you guys are gonna approve this by the way it's looking, but the problem is, I've been here a long time, and the base has always said, we, we need this many, and then it drops. We need this many, it drops. It's done it over and over. And what's gonna happen, right now, there's a big growth because of all the building on base. That's gonna stop. They're repairing hangars, they're repairing all sorts of stuff. Once that's done, the housing market's gonna drop again like it has done every 10 or 15 years. It drops. And like the one guy said, all of a sudden, you're gonna have a bunch of empty apartments, and the prices are gonna low, and it's gonna turn into section eight. That's what's gonna happen. What the one guy was asking, is it legal to go from this to make a section eight? You didn't want to answer that. He was just asking, can it happen? Is it legal? And you're saying, well, we can't speculate. You can tell us the truth. Is it legal to go from this to section eight? That's what you're gonna do, is be truthful about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, questions or comments?
Travis, I do have a question. This document states that the bridge is gonna be in phase three, but it's in phase one.
So, the document for the conditions, if you look at the condition under Public Works Engineering, and you look at number six, it says, "Design and construct a full width, 40-foot traveled way crossing of the Bowman Flood Channel with bike lanes, curb and gutter. Set improvements shall facilitate entrance and exit movements to the site for any phase of construction."
Okay. I do want to make a comment, too. I am an engineer on base, and I will tell you, I've been here for almost six years, and the availability of rentals has always been terrible. I understand that there is a flux, but fundamentally, you will always have beginner engineers coming in, and that need is not going to decrease, it will increase because the base is retiring a lot of people. So, regardless of your speculation, that's a need there. I can go on Zillow and I can find maybe three properties available for rent. And I can tell you that as a beginning engineer here, I'm not buying a house. There are a lot of young engineers working on base who cannot find a property and cannot apply for a house because interest rates are high and they don't make that kind of income. So, I, I think that there is merit in expanding options because that is a need that consistently is there and hasn't changed since I've, since I've started working here.
Wait, wait, wait. If you want to talk, you need to come up to the mic.
I would agree with that. We've worked with a lot of young engineers on base, and they do come here and they, they're, they're looking for a place to live. I would also point out that when young engineers come here and they bring their families, or they come as a single, and they come to this city, they come down in your current road and they come through here, and I'm sorry, it looks terrible on a lot of things. So, that's not only someplace to live, it's the aesthetics of the, of Ridgecrest. And Ridgecrest aesthetic-wise, a lot of the lower-income housing, the neighborhood market area, it's abandoned, and I know you guys are struggling to do that. Wary housing has been a nightmare for 40 years, and the city's never fixed it. So, we don't want in our neighborhood another wary housing. I get it, there is no nice place to live. But the town looks horrible, and the town is trying, the city council is trying, but caving and not trying to push back on this state, which has one goal and one goal only, and doesn't care about Ridgecrest's goals, is, is disheartening. We've all lived here our whole lives. Are these young engineers want to be here and settle up a family? And you look at the shape of this town, you look at the shape of California, we don't want to become Lancaster, we don't want to become Palmdale. And that's our fear. It's not low-income housing, it's not, it has nothing to do with what you make. It is about what your quality of life is and what you want to do here. If you want to make a family here in Ridgecrest, I don't care what you do, but if you just come here to exist, honestly, don't want you here. I want you to be a productive member of this town. Thanks.
Thanks.
So, I, I think we all feel that sentiment. One thing I will say is, the only two things that the city owns in wary housing is a portion of Gold Canyon and a portion of, is it La Mirage, the main road that comes in off of French?
Right, it's all privately owned.
Yeah, so, everything else is privately owned. So, we have no control over any of that. All the streets are smaller. That's outside our purview. So, it's all privately owned, privately furnished. It's, I worked for the water district for 10 years. It's very hard to get them to fix leaks because all the meters are on one side of the road and every service that runs back across the street is owned by the private company. So, that's a huge fight, that's a huge struggle. I think that's one of the last things we would want to see. When you look at some of the apartment complexes and the things that are available in Ridgecrest right now, senior apartments and the apartments across the street from the, not Fowler, the Charter School, some of the nicest apartments in this town, right? That's rent subsidized.
Yeah, my brother's living there.
So, I, I mean, I think a lot of it comes with who the developer is, who, I mean, the, the developer on the Norma Housing side is the same developer that's done that with those. So, I, I mean, we have CCNRs, we have lots of things that we can put in place to try to control things, but like I said, Heather spoke, I think greatly on it. We have one job, look at what the zoning is, try to mitigate it as best as we can, and try to ensure that we encompass all the needs of the community. Like I said, that's one of the biggest reasons why we had them do a traffic study in the first place. We had them revise the traffic study and provide another entrance because I don't want to see all your guys' roads over there jam-packed with cars all the time. And the developer was open to that. I mean, they changed their site plan and facilitated that. So, I, I, I think just in looking at this from face value, when you look at what they've done to suit the conditions, I think they've done a pretty good job.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments?
Traffic, I, I have a, Travis, I had a question about traffic impact, and not just off Raider, on Two Downs, but all the, all the other streets are just controlled by a, a four-way stop. So, Norma and Bowman, Upjohn and Downs, all of those, any sort of weight go into how this is going to affect those major intersections? I mean, Upjohn and Downs has four different schools that kids use those crosswalks all the time. And I just went, from a safety perspective, having this many units, that many cars potentially leaving in the morning, coming back in the evening, it's gonna have a huge impact on those. And I just wondered what, what is the city looking forward to doing to mitigate any of that sort of?
So, we use the standard engineering methodology based on that. Every intersection around that was studied for the trip generation, which is, it's, I don't want to say it's perfect, because it's not, but it's the best model that we have. It's one that's used pretty much everywhere. And the actual trip generation that you get from this fully developed, like I said, if this was done in Kern County, it wouldn't even have warranted them to look at it. So, the trip generation amount is not enough to change a level of service. The only, the only intersection that we saw under its current construction that would change the level of service from an A to a B, which is still well above average in any other community, was Norma and Bowman. But I'm already improving that.
Yeah.
So, that's the only intersection that really had a negative impact. Now, with Upjohn and Downs, 100% agree with you. That intersection, depending on what time you go through it with the developments that's, has gone in over there, is a bad intersection. And I think just about everybody in the audience today would agree with that, right? It's a horrible intersection, even with the improvements that we did to Downs. The crosswalk, it's tough to mitigate, kids getting out, we all know that crosswalks seem to give people a false sense of security and they can just walk out into them. So, we are actually doing a warrant study right now to try to figure out what we can do at Upjohn. I'm not, I'm a civil engineer, not a traffic engineer, so I can't do traffic studies. So, we actually want to do a warrant study to figure out what we can warrant to do to that intersection to make it better. So, that, those were considered, those were part of the traffic study. And like I said, it just, there was not a big enough impact on any of our intersections that would facilitate changing any of them. But we are, like I said, already looking into this, just because, part of the reason why I moved to Ridgecrest and why I'm here is because there is no traffic. Yeah, it's two hours away from everything, but it's pretty easy to make a day out of something and go do it. And I think that's part of the reason why all these people live here, too, is they, they know that I can get all the way across town in 10 minutes, and we don't want to see that change either. So...
Thank you. I had another question about the, the land bridge that you were calling it.
Mm-hmm.
The, um, that, that trail, the, the walking trail or the bike path there, how does that fit into that, where that bridge is? Does that go?
So, that'll be facilitated, just like your typical curb ramp would be. It would be a designated, like a curb return, where you could have a curb ramp that would get across, so the path would keep going. We're doing some improvements at Norma to it. We're gonna facilitate and build that into the infrastructure, too. And it's, it's, like I said, it would be treated like any intersection crossing.
So, whether or not this gets changed to residential high or not, I do appreciate the thought that went into, if you kept it low density or medium density, you would have that just vacant plot of land there for no apparent reason. So, aesthetically, I, I agree with you that it does that, but it does, again, put 60 extra units there, and I think that that has to be considered, you know, as far as even just, like I said, just the basic traffic. So, thank you. But, thank you for looking at that and saying, you know, at least this is something that it's, it's not gonna be just a big square piece of desert right there in that development.
Yeah, square piece of desert with block walls, that's just another channel that we can't maintain, right?
Correct.
So...
Yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions, comments? Yes?
I have a comment or a question for Travis. So, just, just to clarify, from going from medium density to high density, with the medium density, they would be required to have a retention area, correct?
Correct.
And, and now, from going to high density, the city's making them throw their stormwater into the Bowman Channel.
So, our, our thought was, so it's not so much a medium-density, high-density thing, it was a, if we remove the retention requirement because we can facilitate the water through the Bowman Channel, they can't build the site out. So, effectively, we were still gonna get the same thing, and there was gonna be a vacant piece or some sort of something else that we couldn't control, where if we went to this higher density, it would allow them to fill that property to where then it was maintained, was this, we get an improvement to the Bowman Channel, so now we can facilitate stormwater better through that, through all of our stormwater system that collects in the heights. So, it was kind of a combination of both, of looking at both the aesthetic appeal and then being able to facilitate the build out of that property, so that way, we could do and get the improvement to the channel and get the channel to where it would needs to be.
Okay.
Because right now, I think, you know, like I said, the Bowman Channel's an eyesore, right?
Yeah.
So, anything we can do to make the Bowman Channel better, I think that needs to be a focus on my part, and I'll, as well as all of our city staff, because, like I said, I mean, what, 4th of July, we had one firework get in there and it started a fire in it? So...
Okay. That answers my question. A comment for the, the people that showed up to, you know, voice your concerns. I just want to thank you for coming here and letting us know what you're thinking. And there's a lot of talk on social media and all over town about, you know, people that are opposed to this, but if you don't come here and voice your concerns, we don't, you know, we don't hear them. It's not everybody's on social media. Another thing is, you know, this is, this is a, a project that is brought to the planning commission, and it's, it's a step in the direction for building. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen tomorrow. It could potentially, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna break ground tomorrow. So, I think there's a lot more steps to, and hoops to jump through, building, funding, in order for this project to actually break ground. So, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayman?
So, I just wanted to, so one of the things that, they brought up a lot of good points about impacts, right? So, not everybody understands. So, the city has development impact fees that we control some, school district controls others. The school district is now up to theirs to the max because the state required that they charge the max impact fee for our schools, so they're eligible for any grants. So, school impact, we can't, we have no control over. We're a pass-through for that. We have a traffic impact fee that, based on the square footage of the development, the density of the development, all that stuff, there's, that, that fee is calculated. So, that will go to the improvements you saw on Down Street, right? When we did the widening and all the curb and gutter down there, and we made it four lanes all the way through, that was a traffic impact project. So, that's what that's for. So, they are still gonna be required to pay traffic impact fees. We have our conditions to try to best fit the project. You have a police impact, you have a fire impact, we have a drainage impact. So, not only are we going to have a completed portion of the channel for this, but we're also going to get a drainage impact. So, if we find that it creates a problem further downstream, which I think we all are aware that Sunland is a giant problem with the Bowman Channel, that I'm hoping to do some mitigating on this next year, we will now have more fees available to put them in those areas to mitigate that problem. So, it's, like I said, it does a lot of things for us. Some of the other things I'm sure everybody thinks about is like water. Where, where's the water come for this? Well, right now, there's no moratorium for anything on water that says you have to find water to bring water, right? Like Barstow. Barstow has a water moratorium that says if you want to put a new development in, you have to bring us the water for this development. Well, none of that is in place right now, so again, outside of our control. We can't do anything to say, oh, do you have water for this, right? But I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that not only does this project do good things for the community as far as the Bowman Channel and as far as repairing Raider, which I think we can all agree, and especially you guys, how bad is Raider?
Thirty years.
It's bad, right? So, it resurfaces Raider. It's gonna widen the side that's been unimproved forever, to where they actually will have a street that's not gonna beat their cars to death. So, there's a lot of good things that this project brings with it as well. So, we have got a park impact. He talked about a lot of the areas that, I don't want to use the wrong word here, but they're a little rougher than some of the other areas in town. We've seen some building in some of the areas that he's talked about that are doing their part, putting sidewalks in, doing things like that. But it also is gonna bring a park impact fee. We're spending a ton of ARPA money on our parks. We're using ARPA and the new Measure P funds to build a pool. So, we're trying to make things better. And I, I agree, I mean, I live in your guys' area, too. Like I said, I have a lot of the same sentiments that you guys do. But ultimately, I think that building in our town right now is a good thing for this valley with the things that it brings to us. So, if you guys have any other questions about how the, the fees work, you can let me know.
Yeah. Let me give Heather a minute here.
I, I just want to make one other comment about, I, I know there's been a lot of speculation on, and just kind of general talk about low-income, what we call affordable housing. So, this project did not come to us as affordable housing, and it's in an applicant's favor to come to us as affordable housing, because there's concessions that the state mandates that we apply to affordable housing, as some of our commissioners will remember, the kinds of things that we saw for the Mojave View project, like limited parking. So, it's in the applicant's favor if they intend to build affordable housing, to ask upfront, because it's gonna reduce, well, it's gonna increase their density by 20% without asking for a zone change. And it's going to reduce their parking requirements. And there's a lot of other things that we have as a city, basically, no ability to control through our regular zoning as, if they come as affordable. So, when they apply, they ask for those concessions, and this applicant did not. So, there's a lot of benefit to them to come as affordable if that's their intention, because that would obviously... because that would obviously, um, decrease their cost significantly. So I just want to make that clear, too. So as far as intentions, um, that would lead me to believe that that is not.
And, and just to answer your guys' question about if they can go from a regular development to a affordable style, I don't think any of us know that answer off the top of our head, but I will, would like to get your information, and I will personally look into it and see what I can find out, see if that can happen.
So for me, there's a couple of considerations here. One is, it's already zoned multifamily, so they could build apartments there if they wanted to, because it's already zoned that. The, the other thing is, is, uh, I, I look at the overall conditions and what they've been willing to do, and, and feel like that the expense for them to construct wouldn't be beneficial if they decided to lower the rent to $600 a month. I don't think that they could even meet their, their mortgage on it. But the benefit to the city, both in streets, Bowman Channel improvements, um, the bridge, uh, traffic access, um, for me, are a, a great benefit to the community. We've talked about the other apartments in town, I live next to those, and I voted yes. But I did that through research. I went and met the managers, I went and talked to the owners. I looked at how they're managing the ones on Downs, and the parking that was available, um, how the landscaping was being maintained. It was not a hard decision for me, because they were a, a really good developer, and in both of those projects on Downs, look stellar, how many years later? And so when you have, when you have a development and somebody willing to invest in your community, um, yeah, I'm sure they're not doing it out of the goodness of their heart, um, but they're also paying a major price for the benefit of the community. So having said that, I would recommend that we approve Resolution 2310. This is a resolution of Planning Commission of the City of Ridgecrest, recommendation to the City Council, resolution approving, um, the, or approving the general plan, GPA 2201, to adopt an ordinance approving a zoning change, ZC 2201. Do I have a second? Well, do we wanna?
I don't, I just want to know.
Before we, before we do the vote, Commissioner has requested whether or not the developer would like to address the, the group that's here.
Sure, briefly, this is George Zabo, a land planner.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, hi. Appreciate, uh, your considerations, uh, members of the planning commission, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to briefly go over the fact or the circumstance that we, we really tried diligently to come up with a land plan that is, uh, uh, high-quality and meets all the requirements of the city. Um, you know, we have a, a focal point at the, at the entrance, uh, to the clubhouse, uh, the major parking areas are on the perimeter and then penetrate inward, allowing that the pedestrian circulation and, and green space connects all the way through the project, particularly in phases, uh, two and three. We exceed the parking requirements, and, uh, the two- and three-bedroom units are, uh, 950 feet and, uh, approximately the two-bedroom and 1,078 for the, for the three-bedroom. Uh, obviously, we are trying to accommodate the market, and, uh, of course, we could have done a lot more density if we were asking for this zone change, but, uh, this developer was a high-quality developer, seeing Pacific, uh, they really had no interest in doing, uh, studio units or one-bedroom units, uh, he wanted to do units that were oriented to a couple or, or a young family. So we think that it's a, a high-quality development, it will be done in phases, so it will respond to whatever market conditions are there, and, uh, we have tried very hard to, uh, meet or exceed all of the city's requirements, and, uh, the benefits of connecting over to Bowman and, uh, finishing up Raider, and the setbacks, I think, are, uh, inherent in, in the plan, and we appreciate your consideration and hope that you will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back, I move that we approve Resolution 2310. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman.
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon.
Aye.
Commissioner Richter.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
I'd also make a recommendation that we approve 2309 of the site plan review. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman.
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon.
Aye.
Commissioner Richter.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. You're welcome to stay, it's just that particular portion. Commissioners' comments and committee reports? And by the way, thank you so much for coming, and I want you to know we did hear you. Committee reports?
None.
Economic Development met again, we discussed ICSC and attending again this year, and that's it. Well, we moved our, our, uh...
Moved it to Monday.
City Org, yeah. We moved City Org, so, um, and we discussed trash, believe it or not.
And our last infrastructure committee meeting, we discussed several spots of concern with the, um, police department in policing accidents that had happened, uh, traffic We talked about, um, getting the loan or a demo on a unit that'll actually do the traffic studies for us, and at some point, if it's successful, then maybe we will purchase one for the city, because it's much less expensive than actually hiring it out, and it actually does video of all four corners and counts, counts the cars. We talked about, um, some traffic lights, um, some additions, as well as upgrades to the existing system, um, and some of our deficiencies. Travis, anything else that we had in infrastructure? No, go ahead. Go ahead if you want to catch him. Anyway, so, um, we've talked about, uh, some other things that, that are going on, both with Frontier, with Race, and our streets, and what's happening with them, and, and some of the upgrades and, and that. If the community is paying attention, you'll see a number of streets that have been resurfaced with aggregate, not just a slurry. I've seen a number of them on the north side of town, as they're coming back once these people get through getting into the, into the easement, they're going back and, and either re-slurring or, or putting the aggregate down. And, uh, so, pay attention that there's, there is that going on. Uh, we've had a number of streets repaved, um, across Peg and, and in the older Dieter section from Las Flores coming south, um, a lot of those streets were completely repaved, they had just, they were awful. And, uh, so the, uh, tax revenue that, that we're receiving is, is doing some really, really good work here, um, for the community, and it, it will take some time. Any other, uh, reports that the commission has? Okay, staff items for us?
So, um, the first thing I want to talk to you guys about is a special planning commission meeting. There we go. On May the 8th, um, at 5:00 PM. There, um, the public notices for this evening's meeting were not published in the newspaper. So, um, we have an applicant that has been awaiting a public hearing, um, and it did not get posted, um, in the newspaper. So, we're gonna have a special meeting to accommodate that and get it moving, rather than making them wait an entire month over an error that's not, um, of their doing. And this is gonna be, um, for a conditional use permit for a, um, electronic sign. Uh, it's on Triangle Drive, um, in the vacant property that's over there next to the movie theater. Um, you know, the vacant parcel that's, uh, got the frontage on, um, the Triangle Drive, but then it's, goes around that parking lot. And, uh, Mr. Lu...
Llewellyn.
Llewellyn is here tonight. Um, so if he wants to come up and introduce himself, but, um, we'll have that public hearing on May the 8th to talk about his, uh, project, but he is here right now, so I want to take that opportunity to let you guys know. Um, but he has purchased that site, and, um, so we have his project essentially ready to go. It was just a public hearing noticing issue. So.
Yeah, hello. So the property that she's talking about is 151 North China Lake Boulevard, and we're proposing, uh, your approval for an LED, uh, central billboard to advertise and provide, you know, messages to the community, um, keep the, you know, I guess the businesses, the local businesses, um, I guess aware for the community as they're going in on base right there on the corner, it'd be easy access to see, um, communicate, uh, important information, and I don't know if you have anything else to add.
I'd say, I'm sure. Hey, guys, thanks for having us and accommodating us, even though we weren't on the agenda. So I liked how we talked about aesthetics tonight, um, because I am excited to develop that, uh, hopefully the entire piece, but right now, we're talking about particularly the, the, uh, area with the frontage. And the key piece for us to be able to do this is the billboard. I'd like to get the whole area looking beautiful, it's right there when you come in, it's close to the base, and, um, I think it's a little bit of an eyesore right now. Well, anyways, so the billboard, um, will firstly provide, um, an avenue for local businesses to market and hopefully keep, you know, money local. Um, and then you have the messaging abilities for anyone that wants special messages, which is kind of fun. And I, I had one more point, but it's eluded me, but that's basically what we're up to.
So this, this frontage is the piece just south of the entrance to the theater, correct?
Yes, sir, it's like, uh, right in front of that vapors, it was like an old metal building.
Right, right, between, between the building and the drive that goes into the theater.
Yes, sir, so right there where it connects to Triangle Drive and, and China Lake Boulevard. It's a small little section, and then it goes into the back where the farmer's market is.
Okay.
So we're gonna develop that whole area.
I was gonna say, did you buy the whole piece back to the?
We did.
The block wall, okay. That'll be great. All right, then we'll look forward to hearing you. Do we have a conflict at all on May 8th for any of the commissioners? Okay. What's that? All right.
One of the other things I just want to, want to say is, he's been, they, I'm sorry, they have been absolutely rigorous with making sure that all their stuff is in to meet deadlines for us, so on behalf of the...
So we're the hang-up, right?
Yeah, no, well, on behalf of the city, it was a, an error that was outside of our control and outside of your control, I just want to say thank you for how diligent you guys have been with the application process. I know that that can be daunting at times, especially with CUPs and zone changes and all that stuff, because there's a long laundry list of paperwork, and everything was done great, and we look forward to presenting it on the 8th, and we would really, really like it if you guys could accommodate a special meeting so we can get them going.
All right, thanks, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
And you'll think of that other thing, right?
Yeah.
The only other thing that I want to, um, let you guys know about is, we were successful on, um, we, as in Travis and I, um, were successful on getting the municipal code amendments for, um, map extensions, so parcel maps and, um, tentative track maps. The subdivision map act was updated a couple of years ago, um, so we have changed the municipal code to reflect, um, the current subdivision map act. The reason that did not come to planning commission, just to clarify, is it's Chapter 105, and planning commission deals with zoning, and that is Chapter 106, um, even though I presented it.
That, that was a jab, in case you guys were wondering.
Well, I had council members call me, and I says, "Ask Heather."
Yes, so, um, so what it, what it did was, um, and as you guys are aware of, so what the code, um, used to say was that parcel maps were available, were approved for 24 months, and then they're available for one extension of 12 months. And so we changed that, um, it's still the same initial approval period of 24 months, and then it's up, it's still up to planning commission, um, to decide that it still conforms with the general plan and the zoning code. Um, so as some of you know, um, things that we've done in the past to add for track maps in particular, or tentative track maps in particular, is like the, um, the, what are they called? The lighting and landscaping maintenance districts, you know, adding those to bring the maps up to, um, the current zoning code before, um, we recommend that planning commission approve them. So we can still do all of the same things, um, it's just a matter of the time periods now. So, again, the parcel maps are up to six years, and then the periods would be, um, the same as the original approval period, so 24 months. So it would come, um, they could ask for an extension every 24 months, um, and then they would have to be brought up to the current municipal code, um, or in general plan before, you know, you, they'd be available for approval. And then for the tentative track maps, um, those are approved for 36 months, and same thing, they're, it's up to six years for extension periods, and so, and those, again, for the extension timeframe, we went with the same as the approval period, so instead of hearing them every single year, where we're looking at the same thing, um, it would be a three-year period for approval. And of course, if planning commission decided, you know, if there was something in particular that warranted, um, you know, a two-year extension, you know, that's something that would be within planning commission's, um, ability. So, you know, if we knew that the housing element was changing and it's gonna be approved, you know, or that the ACU's study was going to change, you know, as far as the noise in certain areas, so we wanted to bring those maps back sooner, then we still, you know, commission still has that ability, and staff would still obviously recommend that, um, but it just changes those approval periods. So, um, in May, you're going to see the seven applications that I have sitting on my desk.
Well, I appreciate that. Um, one of the concerns I always had is we kept getting these extensions, either because of COVID or because of 2008 or whatever it was, it was going on, and I'm going, well, we're getting the same map back, but it's not up to what we're asking them to do now, and there was no updates, and we were just giving them these blank things. So, yeah, if it comes back every 24 months, we look at it, and if there's needs to be changes, and they, they approve, then, then I think that's good, that gives the city, you know, instead of having some arbitrary drop-dead date.
Right. Well, and as it stands right now, um, you know, prior to this, we had three active tentative track maps.
So, okay.
That's it.
Yeah, if there's nothing else, yes?
I have just had a question.
I have just had a question about a development that we had discussed, and I guess a traffic study was going to be done on the EV charging station and coffee shop, just to the-
Is it underway?
No, 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 we're not answering that. No, just kidding.
Fair enough.
No, so, we actually were able to mitigate all the concerns for any needed for the traffic study based on that by rearranging how we facilitated entrance and exits. So, there is no longer an entrance and exit anywhere on China Lake Boulevard or near the French intersection. We were able to facilitate two-way turning movements for all traffic all the way up at the east end of the property. And they widened the driveway and made a 36-foot driveway there, so you could facilitate traffic in and out. It mitigated all the concerns from Caltrans. It mitigated all the concerns from the fire department. We made that whole bottom area parts for a two-lane drive-through, so it allowed more car stacking. And it basically alleviated all the concerns for left turns in and things like that, right next to that intersection.
So, where are they in their process? Are they-
I have the last revision sitting on my desk to finish, and I'm hoping to approve the project so they can break ground next week.
That'll be good.
And then, the developer has hounded me daily. So, he is itching, they've-
Squeaky will get screeced, right?
Yeah, they've procured pipe. They're ready to rock and roll.
Well, that's good, because I've talked to the dealers here in town, and they've had a number of instances where people coming in with EVs and they have no place to charge them, unless you're a Tesla.
That's true. And then I actually-
And so, they'll take them to their dealership and put them on the one that they have at the dealership. But, yeah, we had, anyway, one was told where they got up to Lone Pine, and they couldn't charge, so they came back to Coso. They charged a little bit. Then they went over to Trona and realized they couldn't get to Death Valley, so they came back and they charged here, and at the dealership. And then he decided, we're going home.
So, and just to add to that, some other news. He's actually been talking to me, and he's currently looking at maybe doing another charging station off 395 in New York as well. So.
Yeah, and that was the concern, is Tesla has kind of got them lined out. But, you know, if you're somebody else, it makes it really hard. And so, you know, whether you're a Toyota or a Ford or a Mercedes or whatever it is, you know.
And one of the other things I just want to add to that is, the developer who, we brought up the plan, I think Planning Commission actually brought it up, tried to hit up a local business to fill the coffee shop. That has been done. So, you will have a local vendor that has a coffee shop right there with it.
All right. So, in our last planning commission, we talked about the development across from the old Walmart. That we approved the changes there. Any particular news on that development? You know, they said that they had somebody that wanted to go in, but they couldn't tell us? Is that moving forward, or was that just, we're being ghosted?
No, I'm pretty sure that that is going to move forward. And I actually, the realtor that is involved with them is going to come in and sit down and meet with us, because they would like to facilitate putting a fueling station on the corner there as well. So, and I'm sure with all the new requirements for a fueling station, it does require a conditional use permit and all that stuff.
Sure.
For a fueling patient, you guys will get to hear some of the other stuff that's coming into it. But I'm sure that that will have some sort of, some EV in it as well.
Okay.
So, I do think with everything and all the news that we've got, that they are still pushing hard to push forward. Did have some banter go back and forth today about permits for the theater. So, it looks like that's starting to ramp back up again. And Habit Burger does have an approved shell. So, I would expect to see, within a month or so, buildings starting on another lot in the Oasis Center.
What was the name of it?
Habit Burger.
That's the other one. That's not the one, that's not-
I've never heard of it.
Habit?
You've never heard of the Habit? You need to try it. It's one of the best burgers I've ever had.
It's significantly better than-
Okay, well, we don't need to go there. Not on a public mic, anyway. All right.
It's significantly better than the ones I can make at my house, okay?
Oh, okay.
That's what she was going to say.
We can go with that. We don't want to be accused of publicly endorsing, so. All right. So, then we'll close this meeting at 7:35. Thank you, commissioners.